We'll now call the regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes.
The county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, February 16, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Artini called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Artini Commissioner, Creed Pletcher Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, William May Parker Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of February 9, 2012, as submitted. Jacob Rieger, Upsher County Prosecuting Attorney, and Laura Queen, Victim Services Coordinator, appeared before the commission and provided a review of the Victim of Crimes Act Victims' Assistance Grant Application for Fiscal Year 2012-2013. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant application and all related documents. William Parker advised that agenda item, recommendation for removal of Roger Everett as executive for the estate of Mary Louise Strader, deceased, was not ready for consideration and was removed from the agenda. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the lease agreement between the Upsher County Commission and Craig Smith dated February 9, 2012, for the Braxton County location of the Louis Upsher Braxton Community Corrections Program. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the contract with the Administrative Office of the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals for the employment of Dalton L. Suter for the Upsher County Magistrate Court. The contract amends and replaces the agreement that was discussed and approved at last week's meeting. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from the West Virginia Solid Waste Management Board concerning appointment procedures to county solid waste authority boards. Two, notice of public hearing concerning the Adrian Public Service District Phase Six Water Extension Project at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, February 23, 2012. Three, home confinement report, January 2012. Four, Louis Upsher Animal Control Report, January 2012. Five, Upsher County E-911 Communication Center reports as listed. Six, agendas and notice of meetings as listed. Seven, meeting minutes or financial reports as listed. Eight, board of review and equalization schedule listed. Nine, board meetings as listed. Ten, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. Commission approved following consolidation of land tracts as listed. The commission met with Debbie Thacker, Wilfong, Upsher County Clerk, to review matters concerning electronic poll books. No action was taken at this time. The commission will consider the matter during budget sessions. With no further business on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission meeting adjourned at 11:30 5:00 a.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not, I'd ask the motion to be approved as such.
I'll make that motion.
Second. On favor say aye. Both same side, motion carries. Okay, it's 9:15 and we have Ronald Fowler, Adligen, Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 13, Review Financial Assistance Need for Improvements. Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, Donnie.
Good morning, gentlemen.
It's actually Chapter 36.
Chapter 36.
What did I say?
13.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw 36. I don't know if I read 36.
No, we're lucky, Donnie. We're not unlucky.
We're not lucky. Well, 13 used to be a lucky number. Maybe that's the reason. Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Good enough. I've come here this morning with a twofold purpose. The first one is to use this forum as a bully pulpit to appeal to the public for some assistance. We have a building up there, the home out on the Alexander Road, that is in dire need of some repairs. Over the years, the building has been patched and put together, but it's finally reached the point that there needs to be some serious consideration given to some, a high level of tender loving care. And we've put together a plan of work to accomplish that. There's a number of things that we want to do, but the most urgent need we have right now is that place needs a new roof. I mean, every time I go up there, I expect to see water puddles on the floor. It hasn't happened yet, but we may not make it through another winter without that. We do not have the money to do that. We just don't have the ability to raise that kind of money to get that kind of work done. So, we have our billing to the public. We have done it through some letters to the editor. We have done it direct mail, asking for people for assistance to do that. We have had contributions of close to $1,000, but that is only going to cover about an eighth of what is estimated the cost. And if we don't repair that roof and that building, you know, we just might as well get rid of the building. So, that's basically the public appeal. And if there's anybody willing to make any kind of a contribution to us, no contribution is too small. Just send them to the DAV, Box 211, French Creek. And that's 26218, and we will continue to work on that. Now, what we have done, in that this is a community effort, a public effort, and by the way, I must say, that is not only the DAV building where we hold our meetings and keep our stuff. It is available to the community as a community building to use for birthday parties, family reunions, and that, at very minimal cost. So, it is a public service also.
Ron, what was that post office box again?
211.
211.
Yep. The second thing is, is last year, our total inflows was about $4,400. Not much money. And all of that was either, all of that was generated through donations, where we do get a small kickback from, I don't call it kickback, but a small rebate from National DAV from the dues amounts to about $500. And all this money is raised through, like I said, donations. Our outflows last year were a little over $3,200. So, you know, we're not operating on a high level budget. And what we've been trying to do was, with that money, of course, most of it goes just keeping the lights on. You got a building, you got expenses. But we do have a mission, and our mission is to provide what services we can to veterans. And we really don't limit to that up in our area because we're such small communities. It's a lot of the services we offer are just available to the general public. And some of the things that we have done is we try to keep lift chair, a bed, walkers, assistive equipment available for them to loan out. And one of our plans is to replace that, but not yet. It's been pretty well worn. So, what we are asking, in that it takes so much of our fundraising money to keep the lights on, just for consideration, if sometime in the future, as you folks take a look at the available financial resources, if you could give consideration to maybe providing us with some assistance, and particularly like if we could just get the utility bills covered, then that would free up some of our donation money. We've bought groceries for people. We've contributed to the VA nursing home down in Clarksville. We've given some money to the VA hospital so they can buy inpatient, you know, things for them to work with. Those are the things that we try to do, and things we can expand on, but as you know, money's the limitation. So, that's my twofold purpose. I appreciate you guys listening, and any questions?
Dennis, Dennis, you want to say something?
I have a question. What does it take to join the DAV for extra membership, and how much are the dues? And how are the dues calibrated?
Yes. The membership is a lifetime membership. You join by seeing me. We'll fill out an application for you, and I will have to look at the form to see how much the dues are because they're structured by age. The older you are, the less the dues. It's a one-time membership fee, and it's a lifetime membership, and it's basically pretty simple to join like that, yeah.
Okay.
So, see me, and we'll fill out the form, and make it happen.
If, I will try to see you off camera.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sure.
But I might be here for long after you're out of the room.
Yeah. If not, I'll catch up with you.
We'll take a little, we'll take a little break afterwards so you can sign up for your lifetime membership, Dennis.
Do you know where I live?
No.
All right. See me after the meeting, Dennis.
Now, uh...
Okay, we'll hook up.
Ron, I did talk with Region 7, with Rosemary Wagner, yesterday, and she's brought her big guns around today, Shane White here and...
The looks and the brains.
Yeah, there you go. Well, you might have that vibe, Ron. But anyway...
Probably look phantom.
Batman and Robin?
Yeah. I believe it's Community Partnership Grant, is that the proper term?
It's Governor's Community Participation Grant.
Participation Grant. And she said that was the fastest way to get money, that's unencumbered money, sometimes it's the fastest. I know Willie's over there looking because sometimes, you know, our delegates and senators will tell you they got you $8,000, and two years later, you got the money. So, but also, there's some other avenues she said Region 7 will look into for veterans-type programs and things like that. So, that's a good beginning right there.
Yeah. So, I need to hook up with these folks.
You need to, you need to talk to Shane after, we'll take a little break here, and they're here for our public hearing in a little bit, but is there anything else you want to say, Shane?
No, I think that's it.
But you get with him, and Region 7 is our grant writing mechanism for the county, and we want to, we want to utilize their expertise and resources.
Yeah.
So, we certainly, that's the first avenue that we want to pursue on that.
Yeah.
And we appreciate all the work that the veterans groups do, and I know it's a thankless job and a lot of volunteer, but I do know one thing. I know I've had some mighty good meals at that establishment, and some of the best mincemeat pie I believe I've ever eaten.
Yes.
In fact, it was a good, the last time I was there, I bought the whole pie, and it was very good. So, one thing I would encourage anybody, if nothing else, when they have their meals, go there and eat, because it is good food, I'll tell you.
Ron, do you have a special committee trying to raise money, or are you the committee?
I'm the committee.
Well, I might be able to help you. I've got contact that I made with another group I'm trying to, trying to help, and I think we maybe I'll get some money through that group to help you.
Oh, we appreciate that. I'll get with you, and we'll, we'll talk about that. I will say this, that, you know, it, like I said, we've got $1,000. I, I see that as significant, but we've also got some other things. There's a group of students over at Wesleyan Appalachian Experience, Lee Ann Brown Educating. They are, they have volunteered, and they're going to do the Pancake Breakfast Force at CJ Maggie's on March the 3rd as a fundraiser, so they anticipate that'll bring in some money. So, we've got some other people involved. Our goal right now, the immediate need, is that roof. And we know the materials. We've priced the materials out, and the best deal we can come up with is $4,200 for materials. Now, once we get beyond that, we all got bad backs, we're all, we're all overweight. It's hard for us to get up on the roof and work. But we may have some labor costs, but if we get enough money to get those materials, we're going to figure out a way to get money.
Right.
So, you know, the immediate goal right out there is to get that $4,200, buy those materials.
Okay.
Okay, guys.
Well, thanks a lot, Ron, and we'll take a little five-minute recess so you can talk to Dennis and Shane.
One of the other things that we have contacted, I contacted Paula Moore here with the USDA as community partnership programs, and they have a matching grant program that she said this project would probably be eligible for, but it's a competitive, of course, and funding has been limited. But that's another avenue as we look at grants we may throw into the mix.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yeah, thank you. We do appreciate all you, we just, we're just kind of out there and really need much of the public appearance. We appreciate people jumping on and helping us with this.
Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks, Alar. Let's take a little recess here, and then our next scheduled appointment is at 10:30, so take a break. Take a break.
From what I understand, you've set the rule of certain hours ahead, you can blow and have to blow.
Okay, we are back from our little recess, and I would want to reiterate again, Ron Fowler's request for anyone that would like to either help with the disabled American veterans, either by joining, or it's DAV post, Chapter 36, on the Alexander Road, and the mailing address is P.O. Box 211, French Creek, West Virginia, 26218. So, if you'd like to make a contribution or join, they certainly would welcome that. So, now, our next scheduled appointment is at 10:30, so we have almost an hour for that, so we'll go ahead and take care of everything else in the meantime. And then our next scheduled appointment's at 11 o'clock, and 1:30 is to wrap up our board of review. So, the first item is correspondence from Region 7 Planning and Development Council regarding implementation of Assessment Due Funding Plan. And Region 7 has been, since 19, or 2007, the board voted to gradually increase the dues so it wouldn't be a burden on counties and municipalities, member governments, and the dues actually will go, this year is, will be 50 cents per citizen, and will go to 75 next year, and then a dollar the next year, and then that's where it will, that's where it will stay at. And I would, the information from Region 7 talks about, gives us information on how valuable Region 7 is to Upsher County, and the projects that Upsher County has received is a total of $30,017,059. So, we've certainly, that's one of our best investments, the dues we paid our regional councils, and it's come back in the, it's come back manyfold. The, part of the, the reason for this is that there are, there's less grant money, that there's administrative fees which Region 7 uses to pay their, get the lights on and pay the help. And the other thing is, there's, there's a lot of these grants that require matching local monies, and this, this money is used for that, which basically leverages that money to, to get more money for the counties and municipalities. And so, we're certainly appreciative of all that Region 7 does for not only Upsher County, but all seven counties. Region 7 has been responsible of bringing in 100, 100, over $179,000 of grant money to the seven counties. I mean, I just would say if you're paying attention.
Sizable difference.
Yes. $179 million of grant money. And that's for water and sewer projects and other infrastructure projects, the energy grant that Regional Councils administered that helped courthouses and municipalities upgrade their heating and air conditioning, energy-saving projects, which save them money then on down the road. So, those are good projects, and as we're going to be talking here at 10:30 with Adrian, Public Service District, and our application again for Small Cities Block Grant. Upsher County, I believe, has probably one of the highest water service rates to the citizens of any county, and it's because of Region 7 working and the PSDs willing to step up to the bat to do what they need to do in order to extend these water lines out into the county. So, any, if there's any questions or comments on that, I mean, that's basically it in a nutshell.
I don't know, depends on the amount of money that they've been able to get us in the form of grants for Upsher County.
Well, the $30 million.
Right.
$30 million, yeah. So, and they'll continue to work, won't you guys? So, we appreciate what you, what you do for the good citizens of Upsher County. We have correspondence from Upsher County Solid Waste Authority regarding the reappointment of Joyce L. Harris Thacker. And Joyce has been on the, I think she's been on the Solid Waste Authority since it's been around. I know she, she's served on that a long time. And this is a notice from the Burrow Smith Treasurer of the Upsher County Solid Waste Authority that it's time for reappointment, and they're recommending that Joyce be reappointed to that position. So, do we have a motion that we honor that request?
So moved. I'll second it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. You can notify Joyce that she's been reseated again.
She's active in so many different activities in this county.
Right.
She's a very, very dedicated citizen.
She is very dedicated. She's like the little Energizer Bunny. She just keeps going and going.
Yes.
Financial information, General County Fund. Mr. Parker, would you like to elaborate on that?
It's just the monthly information that I provide as it relates to our, you know, expenditures for the month and in the month cash balance, which is higher than normal, but we have not done our allocation to the HRA, Healthcare Reimbursement Account, and to the OPEB account for the employee benefit funding. So, that's one reason it's a little bit higher. As you'll see, our year-to-date expenditures are slightly above our year-to-date revenues. That's, you know, been the practice in a few years. It's usually fairly close at the beginning, or anyway, but it's not uncommon at this time of year because then most of the tax collections will start in February and March for the second half and pick up some funding there. But at the present time, our General County Fund is, we're, we're all right budget-wise and departmental-wise. We have a couple of holes to fill in our budget, but at this point, we appear to be okay.
Okay. Couple holes in the budget, but the ship's still sailing. Okay. Next item is the Sheriff's Financial Statement. Everything on you even feel there?
Yeah, that's the, this list, the snapshot at the end of the month, and as you get into budget time, Carol Smith, our bookkeeper, will be providing some information as it relates to some of the funds where payroll reimbursements are, where I happen to wait till funding comes in for the, before we can make payroll reimbursements in some areas. For example, home confinement, I know is one, we've held an $18,000 payroll reimbursement. They have $23,000 in the account now, so we're making that, and that'll be running them, you know, down a little bit. But in our dog and kennel fund, you know, usually we're behind, have to hold until money comes in for that. And another area that's becoming a concern is our 911 fund. As you gentlemen have, know, I've provided information in the past where our landline 911 fees have declined by approximately 30% over the past few years. You know, our wireless has went up. It has not went up as much or drastically. There hasn't been an offset, a one-to-one offset. So, in the future, I may be bringing some numbers or a possible recommendation to the commission to take a look at the 911 fee for landlines.
People giving up their hard-wired phones.
Yes.
In favor of the...
Yeah, and keeping their cell phones, but not necessarily adding a cellphone.
Right.
And so, that, that is becoming an issue when we have a 30% decline in the 911 landline fee revenue.
Right.
And as you gentlemen also are aware, we're, you know, we have 12 full-time dispatchers now that have went through the training, I think all 12 have, are trained, some of them are fairly new at this point, but we've not been at that level for a while, and they will have some recommendations to fill some other, another full-time slot and a couple of part-time slots probably next week, or if not, the following week. But it's, you know, been a constant state of training, which eats up money when people come and go, and you're in a constant state of training, as well as expenses have went up, your revenue's going down, and your overall expenses are going up.
And we interviewed those people the other night. It looked like we had like four good people, but I've said this every two months since I've been here. The turnover, turnover ratio is just crazy.
But unless you would have individual questions on funds and operations, you know, that's, some of the concerns, I know, we'll be taking a look at budget time.
Just for educational purposes, will you might explain how that works as far as reimbursement and the funds, these other agencies or these other funds in relationship to the general revenue, exactly how that works?
Through the General County Revenue Fund, all payroll expenses are supposed to flow through those funds, through the General County Fund for the county commission. So, for example, a home confinement officer, there's a department under the General County Fund that we budget for in that area, then the home confinement fees we use to offset that and reimburse the General County Fund, just, you know, make a check payable to the sheriff and move the money from one fund, you know, from the home confinement fund in this example, to the General County Fund. Usually, 99% of the cases, the reimbursements are going to the General County Fund. The Assessor's Valuation Fund is another fund that we do a reimbursement from. The assessor has people that she has employed either partially or fully through the evaluation fund, and then that money flows back to the General County Fund. There's, you know, E-911, the BU, Buckhannon Upsher Airport Authority, home confinement, Curry Library Fund, you know, there's numerous funds that fall into that category, that where the General County Fund is the conduit for payroll and the funding, and the base fund is the reimbursement for that.
And basically, then we go ahead and pay the bills, and then submit a bill in total, and then they pay us back for it.
Yeah. And many of the funds, most of the funds, you know, we do the reimbursements usually on a quarterly basis. The money's there to make the payment, but we've had a couple of funds here recently where the money was not there, and we've had to wait...
Right.
...until that money comes. So, we're running a quarter behind or more in some instances.
Okay. Okay. We have agendas, notices of meetings, minutes of previous meetings, and it looks like that's about it. And like I say, our next scheduled appointment's at 10:30 for our public hearing with Adrian, Public Service District for their Small Cities Block Grant Application. So, you gentlemen have anything else? Willie?
We did receive a letter from the West Virginia Counties Risk Pool. Again, as you gentlemen are aware, I do believe James D. LaRosa versus Roscoe LLC, and Helen R. Phillips, the assessor, is a civil case, and they're, they filed against the Office of the Assessor as it relates to tax records, in their opinion not being correct. Our records indicate that they are correct based on the transfer information generated by the Office of the County Clerk. But the West Virginia Counties Risk Pool is defending the county, in particular Ms. Phillips, under this case with a, you know, a reservation of rights, which that means in our public officials area of our coverage, this is specifically excluded from... in our public officials' area of our coverage, this is specifically excluded from coverage in almost all, if not all, insurance policies, and are writ of mandamus to force a government agency or body or official to do something that they're required to do by law. And, but they're defending that, but we'll be responsible for the cost at, at the end. Plus, we have a ten thousand dollar deductible under our public officials' liability coverage anyway. So, if even if it was covered under our policy per se without a reservation of rights, then we, then we're responsible for the first ten thousand dollars.
So, are you saying that after the ten thousand, we have coverage, or we don't?
We do not at this point. They're defending us with a reservation of rights, which means they have the right to recover the cost. The Risk Pool has, I mean, reserving the right to cover the cost based on the determination of the outcome of the case, because there's no monetary damage awards being asked for. Now, if the case changes and there's monetary, you know, damages awarded, you know, which I don't foresee they would be in this case, then that would change the situation. But this is how it was under our previous policy in the private industry and...
Same, same policy.
You know, government official, you know, you cannot, if it's proved, that you cannot get, you know, coverage for an act or supposedly have been to be formed, you know, either statutorily regulation or constitutionally. But they're reserving their right to recover their cost.
The Risk Pool is...
Yes.
So, now, in that case, since that has to do with valuations, could that cost be paid out of Assessor's Valuation Fund?
Well, it doesn't have to do with valuations per se. What the case is, is a deed comes into the Office of the County Clerk. This is coal properties, in particular, is what is at issue here. But the party A comes in, sells to party B certain properties, coal, whatever the case may be. The Office of the County Clerk generates transfer listings, transfer data, based on what the deed has, as well as the sales listing form that the attorney has prepared. And then those transfer listings are tran, are transmitted or sent to the Office of the Assessor. The assessor takes those transfer listings and transfers that map and parcel number, the property, whatever the case may be, to the new property owner, to party B. And prosecuting attorney Jake Rigor and I have looked at that during one of our board review hearings, and the transfer listings were all generated by the Office of the County Clerk. The assessor appears at this point transferred correctly based on that data. So, it's just a matter of getting, my opinion, the assessor dismissed from the suit, but you end up spending a few thousand dollars in getting that accomplished, is what the county is looking at.
How long ago, how long ago did that happen?
Hmm. The original, I think from, was nineteen ninety-one is when the deed issue may have started. It appears like the Office of the County Clerk transferred the correct information also on...
Based on the deed?
Based on the deed reading by Mr. Rigor and myself, you know, he's much more familiar with it, of course, than I am. But it appears that the Office of the County Clerk transferred the correct property also based on that. So, it's, you know, a matter of maybe some interpretation of the deed and sales listing form, you know, and, you know, theoretically, if, if we have costs involved and we're proved to be correct based in the deed, and, you know, we could probably go back to the original attorney or the people that are bringing the case. Now, whether we would be able to recover or not, I, you know, I don't know. If it's not, you know, clear per se. But it's, it's an issue where we're gonna spend a few thousand dollars to get somebody dismissed, and a public official dismissed from a lawsuit. And that is not uncommon in the Risk Pool, to spend four or five thousand dollars to get someone dismissed from a case, whether it be a reservation of rights or whatever the case may be, or a county or public official.
So, did it, did this, has this issue not come up since nineteen ninety-one? Not been discussed, or?
Hasn't been questioned until now.
Till now. And it wasn't questioned in any way, any time until the lawsuit was filed?
Not, well, there was, yes, there was...
There were several transfers of that property.
Yeah, there was transfers of the property. You know, it didn't go directly from, you know, from one to the other. There was another party involved that, that transferred it to Roscoe LLC. But there was, as far as I know, representatives from James D. LaRosa, whatever the firm is, or maybe Mr. LaRosa himself, I don't know, or his attorney, did a visit to the assessor's office requesting that the property be transferred. Well, you know, I can't walk in and request that Mr. Rafferty's property be transferred. I can, but the office shouldn't transfer Mr. Rafferty's property to my name based on that request, and of course, they did not. And they've tried to work out evidently issues between the two parties. One party says, "It's ours." Another one says, "No, it was sold correctly in the deed and transferred correctly. It's ours." So, thus, the lawsuit between the two parties with the Office of the Assessor brought in because...
They refused to transfer.
They refused to transfer, and probably, in my opinion, rightfully so.
Correct. But that's what litigation is all about.
That, that's why people wear black robes.
Part of the cost of doing business.
But it will be a few thousand dollars probably just to get dismissed.
Whatever happened to the concept of king can do no wrong?
Anything else? If not, we'll, while we're waiting for our next appointment, we'll start on our paying the bills. We're back from our recess, and it's 10:30. It's time for our public hearing with Adrian Public Service District concerning Small Cities Block Grant Application. So, who wants to speak first? Shane, are you the spokesperson?
Geez, pay attention. My bad.
Uh, well, good morning.
Good morning, Shane, from Region Seven.
My name's Shane White-Harmon with Region Seven Plan Development Council, and Carrie Smith is with me today.
Hi, Carrie.
Um, well, unfortunately, I was afraid, well, actually, I'm just kinda dissatisfied that we're here again this year. We've, this, I think this is our fourth year, and I know, in doing this. And if you can remember, in the, for the last four years, we had to do a, a public hearings to submit the Small Cities Block Grant application for the Adrian Phase Six Water Extension. Two years ago, we received a $200,000 design grant, and, which basically has been spent. But last year, we were hoping to get the remaining funds that we asked for, but we were unfortunate in that request. So, that's why we're getting here, again, this year, doing the same thing. So, with that, if nobody has forgotten to sign in, please do so before you leave. We gotta have a record of who's in attendance.
You wanna bring it up here? Is everyone back there signed in?
Do you sign? Okay, thanks. Before I get into project specifics, let me give you a few things in regards to this year's program for the Small Cities Block Grant. They're expecting to receive approximately thirteen million dollars. So, if you take out the state administrative costs and the technical assistance costs and all the other costs, you're looking about two and a half to three million dollars that they're gonna have to play with for the entire state of West Virginia. Very competitive. When you only got two and a half million dollars versus, you know, and they usually get fifty to eighty million dollars in requests a year, it's pretty competitive.
Yep.
What they'll do is, they'll, they have the intent to commit up to approximately five million dollars of 2013's allocation, which will allow them to fund more projects. So, basically, they're borrowing from next year's allocation to fund more projects that are submitted this year. If that makes any sense.
And then the next year, they'll borrow from the next year.
They'll do the same thing. And that's the thirteen million dollar allocation that they received, ten million is taken out from this year's allocation from last year's.
From last year.
Okay. So, it's a continuing thing. The deadline to submit an application's March 26th, I believe. Yes? Basically, the app's already done. Just a few updates here and there. No major changes, other than we did receive, the PSD received last month, a million-dollar grant from the United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Utility Service Grant, which is absolutely huge for us. It allows them to borrow less, and also has committed other funds to the project, which enhances its ability to receive other funding. So, that was a huge step. Since the last hearing, before I open up for comments, I will go over a few things, which I have a handout that Nina's prepared. So, if you wanna take one, pass around. There's a couple of things I wanna point out. You know, they, they look at projects due to the allocation, the expenditure rates. They look at projects that are ready to proceed, and they wanna fund projects that are not gonna sit there a while. So, I think this one fits their, their criteria in that, you know, it's not gonna be sitting. You know, this project's ready to go, basically. Since last year's hearing, since we did this last year, the design has been completed. Plans and specs are finished. The Health Department approved the plans and specs, and they've issued their permit. DOH has approved and reviewed the plans. They'll issue their permit once we get closer to the construction part of it for the bonding and everything. And as I mentioned earlier, USDA committed a million-dollar grant to the project. We have spent the, as I mentioned earlier, you know, this project received a $200,000 design grant. Basically, all that, almost all of it has been spent to pay for the design of the project. And then also, the PSD obtained a design loan from the Infrastructure Council to assist with the upfront cost to get to the point, start construction. What's the schedule look like? The schedule looks like if we're fortunate enough, it all depends on the funding commitments. I mean, Public Service Commission has to issue a certificate before you're allowed to start construction, okay? Well, you're not allowed to apply for that certificate until all the funding is committed. So, we're kinda working backwards, okay? So, basically, if the funding's committed this fall of 2012, the schedule and the hope is to start construction the following summer. I believe that's accurate. And basically, the district is currently, right now, trying to get users signed up and getting the right-of-ways and so forth. So, once the funding is committed, we can submit to the Public Service Commission, and then we'll be ready to go. Am I leaving anything out? Sounds pretty good. So, with that, I'll leave the floor open to any questions, comments, anybody may have.
Now, the, the million-dollar grant, that wasn't anticipated?
Correct.
Right? So, that was just manna from heaven?
Well, I think the, there was, I think the district and the engineer had, had discussions with USDA previously, and then they came through with it, I believe.
So, did that, where, where did that, where was that million dollars gonna come from?
They were going to borrow that.
Borrowes some more?
Yes.
Borrow instead of three million, borrow four million?
Exactly.
Well, that certainly, I'm sure the existing customers will be happy about that one.
And the, I forgot to mention the, we will be requesting with this application 1.3 million dollars. And with the $200,000 grant, that takes the maximum out you're allowed to ask for, which is 1.5.
On the small cities.
On the small cities, yes. It's still five and a half million dollar project. So, the only thing that's changed is the amount of money that they will borrow versus the amount of grant that they got, so.
What are you, what are you finding within the last two years as far as how bids are coming in on projects with the economy like it is?
Actually, pretty good.
That's helping. Where, where I believe this, this project, the cost went up because of the amount of time involved, isn't it?
So far, it has not.
It hasn't?
No, I think they kinda...
Now, that was the other project, was it? That was your, your project you finished. I know usually, the longer it drags on, the more the cost. That's the only good thing, I guess, about the economy like it is, that contractors are hungry, and so they're bidding leaner, to, just to get projects to, to keep the doors open and equipment running, so. Okay, well, that, I'm sure those 164 new customers will be very happy if we can get this all put together, so.
And the, the district has taken steps to move this along. I mean, they, they went out on limb and, and, you know, obtained a design loan about the same time that the design grant was approved two years ago, which is kinda coincidental, yeah. So, anyway, they've taken steps to move the project along, and hopefully, this year, we'll cross the finish line to get all the funding and then start, start the thing, so.
Okay.
What would the timeframe be that you were to be successful to hear something?
Um, the announcements are usually made, I tell you, it varies year to year. I've seen announcements made as early as October and as late as February. So, say, for example, they make announcement in October, which is the hope, they'll submit to the Public Service Commission probably within a month or two later and have, you know, be able to advertise and start construction the following summer. So, summer 2013 is the hope to start, actually, construction.
In a year.
Yes. So, a year, year to a year and a half from today.
Okay. So, what's our timeline? Have we met the, the obligations as far as where we're ready to approve the grant application for Small Cities Block Grant on behalf of Adrian? We're ready to do that after this hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. The, any resuminal, if you do not get funded the previous year, the next year you apply, you're only required to, to do one hearing, public hearing.
Instead of two.
What they refer to as a resuminal hearing.
Right.
And that's what this is today, so.
Yeah. Well...
Anybody have any other comments, questions? Anything, you know, anything to help us out to include in the application, just let us know. We'll make sure it's, it's put in there. But like I say, everything's basically pretty good shape. Carrie's been working on it, so. Do they have anything?
Okay. Then we will declare the public meeting closed, and then I would ask for a motion that we approve the Small Cities Block Grant application for Adrian Public Service District in an amount of 1.5 million?
1.3.
1.3, 'cause you got the two last year.
Right.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. Been a very successful meeting. And here, well, this is what happens when everybody works together. Good things happen for the people that we're all here serving, so.
So, here's one thing I told you. Trey Horner, the engineer, was going to be here, but he had a prior obligation, so...
Well, I think since...
And he, he did send us an email, which the information on the handout was in, in his email, so I wanted to make sure I let everybody know that.
Okay. Well, he explained everything last year.
Yeah.
So...
I was out of the room here a little bit, but did you mention it was serving Webster County also, so it's a multi-county project?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And actually, the fact that it's going into Webster County actually lowered the cost per customer for the Upshur County regulations.
Exactly. Made it more feasible.
Made it more feasible to do the project.
So, everyone should be happy.
And since I'm, I'm in Webster County now, Thomasville is in Webster County, that's...
At least in the House of Delegates minds, it is.
At least in the House of Delegates minds. So, I guess that, that puts us in a good situation. That's the first thing we can do together, is Upshur County and, and Webster County citizens of Upshur County. Okay, well, we thank you all for coming in, and keep up the good work, and if you wanna talk to Terry Jo, she's in her office, I believe, Nina.
Thank you for your efforts.
Okay.
Thank you for your efforts and attendance for that program.
Okay.
Keep up the good work.
And your willingness to serve, that's important.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you too.
I don't know if everybody got signed in. I don't know if Dennis did, or...
Are you gonna do anything more for the next 20 minutes?
No.
We're gonna...
Actually, we want two.
You might wanna niche yourself, because you're on camera.
Why don't you go over the podium first, and then niche yourself?
Because you have a camera on.
Yeah, I would wanna, uh, because it's, know that you're, what you're giving us today.
Not a problem. My name is Will Wesley, and I'm with Election Systems and Software, and I'm here to do a presentation of our electronic poll book. I have a fully functional demonstration that I'll be able to show you everything that, that it can do, everything that West Virginia requires.
That's good.
Okay? And I, I really didn't wanna set it up prior to this, because I wanted everybody to see how to set it up, because this is what your poll workers would have to go through in the morning. And it's very simple. You'll see, it's got a... And I, I really didn't want to set it up prior to this because I wanted everybody to see how to set it up, because this is what your poll workers would have to go through in the morning. And it's very simple. You'll see, it's got a really nice case that keeps the poll book and the attachments to it would actually be in a separate bag. We do have, this is my personal bag, but we do have a bag that you can purchase to carry these two items. Now, one of the items is actually optional. You're not really required to have this in West Virginia. And that is this printer. This printer right here that goes with it is a printer that will print out an address of someone. If you have to look someone up and they're in the wrong precinct, you can actually print out an address and hand it to them and say, you know, here's where you need to be voting. It'll also print out a, I forget what you call it. When they, it's, it's a, it's a form, it's a document that you give them when they sign in at the table that says, I've, I've signed in. Is it an application to vote? Is that what, a post slip? Post slip, okay. And what I've done with this post slip, because it's a demo, it's going to print out a pretty long strip. And the reason I did that is because I told our programmers, every option that you could possibly print out on this post slip, I want you to print it out on this demo. You can have this thing not be on at all, or you can print as much as this stuff, and I think there's like forty items from your database that you can print out, but that will be your call. Prior to the election, we would let you fill out a form, you tell us what you wanted to do, and then we make it do that. The other thing that it'll print out is a provisional ballot form. You know, when a person shows up and they qualify to do a provisional ballot? You can actually tell the poll book, I want them to do a provisional ballot, and I'll show you that. And it will then, at the conclusion of that, print out the same kind of form. There's about forty items that you could put on that, and there's also signature lines at the bottom of the provisional ballot form. I've seen a few, a couple of counties that are really excited about this, like Canal. They were excited about that because she said, Vera said it eliminates some of the forms that you have to fill out for provisional ballots. And her intent is to just print this out, have the voter sign it, staple it to the envelope when you, they put the provisional ballot in it, and then that serves as what you would use during your canvas to determine if that voter qualifies or not.
Do they use that much, does it?
Yes, they do. Well, ac- actually, this is the first time, they've actually used our other poll book, but everybody in the state will be using this going forward. And I did just talk to Lincoln County, they're going to be, right now, they're just using it for early voting, but they're expanding to, I believe, six regional sites around Lincoln County. And they're going to use this poll book in all of those. And at the last meeting I had, she said that they even wanted to use it countywide now. They're looking at putting it in every precinct. So, we'll talk about pricing in a minute too. I don't have the exact pricing, but I know under the previous version of poll book, it was about, for everything that you see, it was about $3,000 for a set.
Like you included the printer that
And includes the printer and the signature pad that I'm going to pull out here in a second. But with this poll book, that's actually about half price. So, so if you wanted to do it like, say, in one early vote site, it would cost you about $3,000. Reason I say that is because we always recommend you have at least two, because you don't want to run a dual system where you got to print the paper ballot, paper poll book, and have the electronic poll book. You, you always want to have a backup.
That's what I had to talk to.
Right.
The only thing I think I do want to press, I think you were talking about Canal County, right?
Mm-hmm.
When you mentioned Lincoln, you said Lincoln, it's Canal County.
But actually, both counties are using it.
It's Lincoln County.
Lincoln County is using it also. Lincoln is our, has used it for, I want to say maybe a year and a half now. We've got four counties in the state that are currently using our poll book, Jackson County, Monongalia, Lincoln, and Wyoming. And so, they're going to continue to use it. Canal just indicated that, that they're interested, and we're going to do a pilot with them this coming May election in four precincts, two polling locations. And then the intent is to go countywide with it in all one hundred and eighty-seven precincts if everything works out okay.
How would you determine who's going to use them, Debbie, or?
Your poll clerks will.
Just the poll clerks?
Yeah, just the poll clerks. What I'm wanting right now is just for early voting.
Right.
We want to try out an early voting, and then maybe go to the larger precincts in your section.
So, we need two, two units?
Yes.
Now, if you have it in one site, these two units right here are actually designed, you don't have to do any additional programming, to work together. So, say if you had a sign-in table over here, and you had a sign-in table over here, and someone came in and signed it over here. There's a cord that basically runs between the two poll books that as soon as they sign in over here, it synchronizes with the other one. So, there's no chance that they could slip around the room and try to vote again. Now, if you need a wide area network, meaning that if, like in the case of Lincoln, where they're going to have six regional sites set up, through internet connectivity, you get the same result. And then you would tell it or program it to synchronize as often as you think it should. We typically recommend nothing more than ten or fifteen minutes for that synchronization to occur between all the sites, because we don't think that in most cases, unless you tell us otherwise, someone could vote here and be at the other site within ten or fifteen minutes while it's not synchronized.
Hopefully, that's not happening in any county in West Virginia. Even though they're trying to get a higher voter turnout, that's not the way to go.
That's not the way to do it, yeah.